We'll call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the budged allegiance? Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the council meeting tonight. Appreciate everyone coming out. Will you call the roll, please?
Bachman?
Here.
Henning?
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. And the first item on our agenda is the clerk's report. Will you read that, please?
You have the council meeting minutes of September 7th, 2023.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. And tonight is our second reading of an ordinance, so this is the instance that we put visitor comments prior to the reading the ordinance, so I'm gonna have to grab that sign-in sheet real quick. Okay, so I'm gonna read it off just as everyone signed in, and most people wrote no, but if you have changed your mind and want to speak, then you're welcome to obviously stand up and speak. And we asked that you limit it to five minutes and that you would state your name and address for the record. Susie Gardner?
No.
Okay. Gloria Van Fostig? I'm sorry. One day I'm gonna get that. Chris? Warren Gardner? Sure.
280 Vintage Place. Quick comment, this is concerning the Crescent Communities Development south of 70 and east of Teywood. I know the last meeting I was to here, there was strong support to not have that development if it goes through to gain access onto Elrue. And I've since seen three red diamond signs put up there as for the dead end signs. I think that's brand new. Maybe that's a statement of support there. But my understanding is Crescent Communities will litigate to gain access. Is the city of Clayton prepared to handle a lawsuit from that company to be able to gain access onto Elrue?
I think I'll defer that one to our attorney.
And I would take my direction from council as to what they want to do with respect to litigation, so I take my cue from you.
We haven't-
Have we been sued yet or anything?
No.
So it's not really a question right now? Okay.
Martina, I have a question too. I asked Amanda the other day. What if Crescent Communities, is it, decides to buy one of the lots on Savina and Inglewood? And bring a street through there? Those are all hundred lot, hundred foot lots, with the exception of the chicken, the Mr. Omer's, the first two lots he put together to build one house on. If they could, I know those people on Elrue aren't very happy about that plaque going in back there. And if one of them makes a deal with the guy, can they bring a street through there to, onto Elrue?
Would the street be-
Or onto Savina, excuse me?
Would the street be in Inglewood or would it be in Clayton?
The street is in Inglewood. We dedicated it to Inglewood when we put it in back in the 70s.
That's mine. I would have to look a little more at that to see.
I mean, I'm just, it just better be safe than sorry.
Yeah, no, I-
We know about it in advance.
I completely understand and we can-
And I talked to Amanda, as I said, and she said it, I know on either end of it is Clayton streets. Maybe they could drive in those eight lots that are there, but then we could shut them off. I don't know the rules on that.
Yeah, I would want to take a look at that, and I can get with Amanda this week and we'll look a little further into that because I haven't specifically been asked about that particular aspect of it.
Because that's how they got into, to the city of Inglewood in the first place, was over water.
So is that clear as mud? I'd say, you know, stay tuned for that one. We also, we all heard the same thing. I think that you've heard that, you know, the developer had made, made that comment, so I don't think anything else can really be decided on at this point, so, but we're, we're on top of that issue, so. Oh yeah, okay. Well, we'll go backwards. You can come right up then, right now.
10831 Putnam. Hi, okay, so, so first off, I'm gonna start off by saying thank you. I got a thing in the mail. I throw all these things away for energy and all of this and think that people soliciting switch to us, switch to us. And then I saw something come up that saying that you have set till the 15th, I think it was, to change or whatever, and come to find out, and I think you clarified it too, that you actually got as a reduced rate on energy. Somebody did, somebody voted. I just want to say thank you on that, on behalf of all of us. Two, hopefully, I'm gonna put the last plea in for you to take one last stab to maybe put this whole bit to an end by saying no to the rezoning. I think that's kind of a lost cause, but I still want to put my pitch in for that. Three, one of the things, I'm liking this, what we're doing. We're all getting to know each other, we're all learning more. But I think there's a lot more about what the community wants. I think you guys are here, you're doing stuff, you're trying to do stuff what you think is best for the community. But I, I've been here nine years and I don't think I've ever been asked, never had anything come to my door that said, hey, what do you, what would you like of your Clayton community? I've never seen a survey, I've never seen, you know, a questionnaire, you know, what are your concerns, you know? Do you want more businesses? How are the school systems and all of that? And maybe it's something you guys want to really look into, is actually putting a full-blown out, get a committee together and put a bona fide survey out, because I think the last time you did the plan was like 2018 or something. So I suppose you're coming up on the five year of that again. And maybe before you do that and you decide what you think is best for us, how about if you ask us, send out something to every household in the community and have us, actually get back to us and give us a reasonable amount of time and maybe some additional forms or something like that. And, and I personally, you know, I'm sure other people would probably be willing to help you do stuff like that, to come up with a questionnaire and stuff to put out. So anyway, I just wanted to put that idea out to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose Plummer? Joe Plummer? Sam Cox? Kristy Cox? Ryan Farmer? Paulette Farmer? Ellen Hogan? Jeremy Blandford?
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Blandford, 10801 Haber. I have two questions. One, I've heard one thing, I've read another. Can we get clarification on the income tax levy that's coming due in November? What it's gonna affect, because I work in Dayton. We all know that Dayton's tax rates are stupid. And I just, I want clarification, that way I'm making an informed decision. And I imagine a lot of these people are as well. So we can get some clarification from y'all or Martina, whoever. That would be great. That way we're not either, A, spreading disinformation if we're talking to people about it, but I want to make sure that I understand it. Two, about, what, 10 days ago? We saw, well, we didn't, I did. I saw five different traffic counters out, two or three on Haber. I saw at least one on Sweet Potato. Do we have any idea what that was for? And, you know, can anybody shed any light on it or, because we didn't see any markings on the, on the truck? So we're just curious.
I can answer that, if you don't mind. So every year, we do counts for MVRPC. And this year, they asked for counts north of 40. So it's our engineer, the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. Yeah, they asked for counts. So our engineer, Kleiner's, went out and put up the counters.
Okay, is that a yearly thing or?
Yeah, they ask for counts from different parts, from different cities every year.
Oh, okay, so that was-
It's not just Clayton.
So that was independent of the traffic study or whatever we did?
Yes. The speed study?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, well, this, you're talking about the stealth stat that the police chief did? Yeah, it's completely separate.
Oh, okay. So that's just a normal thing?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, cool. That's all I had.
Thank you, sir. I don't want to put Kevin on the spot, but you want to give like a, like a one-minute synopsis here, yeah. And I think if you have specific questions, you know, obviously.
We do have a lot of information come out in our newsletter. I did, I put a couple of examples in there. Basically what we're doing, we're at one and a half percent right now with 50% credit. So with the 50% credit, you only get .75 credit. If you work in Dayton, you're paying two and a half. So you pay the two and a half to Dayton, then you still owe us .75 because you only get 50% credit, so you're paying 3.25. What the, what we're putting on the ballot is to raise it to two and a half for Clayton, but 100% credit. So you work in Dayton, paying two and a half, you get 100% credit, you owe Clayton nothing. So that way, we're hoping, you know, that we can get rid of that, that burden of the 50% credit. It will open up, people will be able to file online with the CCA we have. And we can generate, get some more income from, from the, the people that work in, in Clayton instead of putting it on the residents as much. So that's basically what it is, is another 1% on top of the one and a half, but give you back the 100% credit.
Is that gonna retro?
Yeah, we'll start, it'll start 1-1 of 24.
Okay, so it'll affect the 2025 tax, or 2024?
Yes, correct.
So one of the stuff, people that are retired?
We still don't tax retirement incomes, don't need earned incomes, so W-2, rental income. If you have, you know, partnership or something like that, but retirement income, annuities. That, that's not, social security, nothing's taxed.
So as Kevin stated, our newsletter is basically dedicated to the information about the levy and then services provided by the city. And then there's also a series of social media posts that are also going out, so if you look at the city Clayton Facebook page, they're there. The one that went out two days ago was about what Kevin just said specifically. And then there's a series on police service, fire service, public service, and things like that. The newsletter, they're mailed to your house.
Is it October?
It'll be October 11th is when they should be in mailboxes.
Yeah.
I have just a quick question. If, if the people vote to approve this tax increase, does that lie counts while I've been able to ever change that 100% credit to anything?
Yeah, then we have to come back to the voters for any kind of change.
If you change again, have to go back to the voters?
Right. 2016, when the state mandated a bunch of changes to our, our tax code and made us start taxing gambling and lottery winnings and doing the estimated tax that has been a pain for everybody, that was mandated by the state. When they opened it up, we didn't have to ask for voters and that's, that's when the change was made. So going forward though, it would have to be taken back to voters to reduce that credit.
At the risk of sounding like I'm making a pitch for this, which I do believe this will be a good step for the cities. Since I've been involved in this entity up here with council in as the mayor, I've taken so many calls on the tax issue. It's just, to me, I, I just, I'm personally glad that it's gonna, that it's gonna go this way for, for my personal finances. But also, I mean, every year at tax time, we all, I think, I think I speak for everyone, we all get flooded with people that are really mad about that 50% and the way it was done. So hopefully, you know, hopefully this will rectify one thing.
I mean, there was a group of citizens that talked about trying to get a referendum for the tax credit to be restored, so.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Kevin. Uh, let's see, and Alicia, you're the last one. Say anything? Nope, okay. All right, that's all the names on here except for Mr. Harlemur. We're gonna wait for you. But anybody else want to speak or say anything before we close this portion? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to old business, and we have one ordinance tonight, the second reading. Will you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0092321, and ordinance affirming ordinance 0052308, and further authorizing and directing the Montgomery County, Ohio Board of Elections to conduct an election of the electors of the city of Clayton, Ohio at the primary election to be held on March 19th, 2024. On the question, shall ordinance 0052308, which adopted the planning commission's recommendation to approve with specified conditions, the application of Clayton Properties Group, Inc., doing business as Arbor Homes, for a change in zoning from Rural Conservation District 2, RCD 2, to Plan Development District PDD, and to further approve the preliminary development plan for 42.99 acres of property located along Phillipsburg Union Road and Haber Road, and bearing parcel ID number M6003006009 to be called Salem Springs within the city of Clayton, Ohio, be approved.
Any questions or comments on this? Okay, will you call roll, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Your motion, motion to accept as written.
Second.
Motion to accept the ordinance as written by Mr. Merkel, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
No.
Gorman?
No.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
So again, we are split four to three. Or five, five to two, I'm sorry. Uh, okay, so we'll move on to new business. So we have a first ordinance reading tonight. Will you read that, please?
Ordinance 0092322, and ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Clayton codified ordinances.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion to approve the ordinance as, ordinance as written by Mr. Merkel, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous.
This is just standard language, correct?
It is. There are items that were adopted by the state that we need to adopt into our code.
And we have three resolutions on our docket tonight. Will you read the first resolution, please?
Resolution R092357, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a renewal agreement with the Public Entities Pool of Ohio, PEP, and Burnham and Flower Insurance Group for the provision of property casualty and liability insurance coverage for November 1st, 2023, to October 31st, 2024, with an annual premium not to exceed $128,650.50.
Any questions or comments for Kevin?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that was unanimous. And will you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution R092358, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Montgomery County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
This is something we do every year for property tax rates. And again, showing how our, all of our property tax levies, except for the general fund, 1.6 mil that's inside the 10 mil limitation. All those other levies we have for police and fire are capped. We can't collect any more income off of those. Even if values go up, we don't get any more. We're seeing a $15,000 increase from, from this year to next year. So like I said, it's, we get very little additional property tax from any kind of valuation increase. So we need to have these accepted and I'll send them down to the county.
So the increase is probably from new structures?
Right.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to accept the resolution as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. And will you read the third and final resolution?
Resolution R092359, a resolution supporting Northmont City School District levy.
Any questions or comments on this? Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only thing I'd add is Kevin, you would know this. Northmont reduced their millage from what they tried to put up last time. And I forget how much they reduced it. If you could please let us know.
It was 7.9 mils. It's down to 5.3. And it is based off this year's valuation, so it won't be increased when next year happens. It's based off. And again, they'll, like they're, like our levies, they're, the values times the, the millage times the, the value is the most they're gonna collect, so.
For their 2003 property values.
Right, it's based off this year's property values.
Cool, thank you. I just wanted to make sure if anybody was watching from home, they knew that Northmont reduced the amount that they asked for last time. It was on the ballot in May, in which it wasn't successful.
I think we have, I think the motion was made by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that was unanimous. I want to make one other comment on this resolution. I just want to reiterate that although we do support Northmont schools in many, many ways, they're a completely different entity than we are. And we don't share funds and we don't, you know, this, this doesn't have anything to do per se with us, other than the fact that we do support the school system as a council. So I just wanted to make that comment, so. Okay, thank you. The next item is the city manager's report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have a few items for you this evening. The first, I'd like to ask Chief Garver to come up to the podium. We have two new employees that we'd like to introduce to everyone.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just here to introduce two of our four new employees. We'll get the other two at a later date. They were sworn in last week at our swearing in and award ceremony at Meadowbrook. So, but I still want to bring them in front of you guys, you at least get a chance to meet them and see who they are. So the first one I'd like to call up is Jack McGurk. Jack has been with Clayton since January 2022. He's been career since August of '22, so he's been with us just a little bit over a year full-time. So with everything going on, we haven't got him in front of council, so it's been a year. So typically, that's not the way we do it, but he's a seasoned veteran now. Jack grew up in Troy. He graduated from Troy High School in 2019. He attained his firefighter level two and his EMT certification in '21. Jack is currently in paramedic school and he will be graduating in December, so he'll be a newly paramedic, which is what we always strive for with our staff, so we appreciate that. His hobbies include, he goes to the country concert religiously every year. He likes hockey and football, and he is, likes most Michigan sports. So we are fellow Wolverine fans, but he's a Lions fan, I'm a Bengals fan, so we don't see eye to eye on that one. But we won't hold that against him. Jack's been, he started out, this is his first job he's ever had, was with the collaborative and with Clayton. So he didn't work for any other fire departments until he came here. And he's been a great addition. He's enthusiastic, he works really hard. And he's, he's been dedicated to the city and we greatly appreciate, appreciate him and he's been a great asset. So thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Welcome. Congratulations.
The next individual I'd like to call up is Brett Schumpert. Brett has worked within the collaborative since December of '22 and with Clayton since last month. He was one of our brand new hires. Brett was born in Missouri and he lived in three states and multiple cities throughout his, his growing up years. He moved to Ohio in 1998 where he lived in, in Tip City in West Milton. He was homeschooled and graduated from West Milton technically. Brett has been in the fire service for 13 years. He's worked for several different departments in the area on a part-time basis, and he decided to throw his hat in as a career. So he's in paramedic school as well. He graduates in December. I think we've got four or five people in paramedic school right now that will be graduating in December. So we are growing our paramedic ranks, which is again, what we strive for. Brett has a wife and two kids. His newest kid was born last week, so congratulations on that. A baby little girl, so, and I hear your son loves her, so. His hobbies include NASCAR, football, hunting, and fishing. And Brett's only been here for about a month now, but he fits in really well. We welcome his, his experience, and he jumped right in with both feet. Wasn't very hard to get up to speed, so we appreciate that aspect of it. And he's been doing us a great job, so we appreciate that and welcome aboard Brett.
Welcome both of those gentlemen, and thanks for that introduction, chief.
Well, continuing with the fire department. So if you recall at the last meeting, we discussed the feasibility study for the new fire station that we will hopefully be able eventually build. The plan was to utilize or continue using the JED funds to fund that feasibility study. When council authorized the purchase of the building or the purchase of the land, you authorized $200,000. The cost of the land with commissions for the realtor ended up being 182, which left roughly 118,000, or not, 18,000, $18,000. The feasibility study is 25,000, so I'm asking council to authorize me to spend the 25,000. While it's within my, oh, 26,000, I'm sorry, I'm glad Kevin's here. Within my, within my spending limit, I want to make sure everybody is on the same page, that that's what we're going to do.
Any questions or comments on the fire station issue? Everybody good moving forward with the study?
I don't really, I don't need a vote. I just need, if anybody is opposed, to let me know.
It looks like we're, at this point, all okay with that, so.
Just a few city news and events. So we do have the open house here at the city building on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023, from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. That includes the fire department, the police department, and the service department. They'll have the trucks out for everyone to see. So come out and see that. We have Fosse, Clayton Clean coming up on Saturday, October 21st, from 8:00 a.m. to noon at Woolery Lane. That does, the bins do fill up quickly, so if you're coming, come early. A few other noteworthy things. So at last, or last Thursday, Elena and I attended the Center for Local Government Annual Meeting, and Elaine graduated from the Leadership Academy. Jack also went through the Leadership Academy before. And I find it a very valuable program. They get to touch on a lot of different city functions that they may not be able to do in their regular roles here at the city, and I think it's very valuable. The Northmont Homecoming is Thursday, October 5th. I think everyone has decided they're going to participate, so we will get that organized. We'll have golf carts there for everyone and candy to hand out. We do have multiple applicants now for the Parks Advisory Commission. We went from famine to feast. So you should have all of their resumes in the packet. We'll bring legislation next meeting with a blank space, so you'll be able to make a determination who you'd like to see on that board. Hunter's Path will hold, hold an open house on September 29th. The informational flyer is also attached. And that is all I have for you evening, aside from a request that at the October 5th meeting that I be excused. It is my daughter's senior night for soccer, and I would like to attend that. Elaine Whitman has agreed, or said that she could come in and cover the meeting, as long as council's fine with that. as council's fine with that. That's all I have for you.
I have one additional thing for you. So I know you took on a different role or a new role, additional role, I should say. Can you tell us about that?
I was elected the president of the Center for Local Government Board. It's voted on by the other member cities of the Center for Local Government. So the board consists of five people and I get to lead meetings and sign papers, so.
Well, congratulations on that. And if you would keep a surprise on how that goes, I'm interested, so. Anything else for Amanda on this at this time?
Open seats? How many open seats at this, at this current moment?
For the Parks Commission, one.
Oh, okay. Just one?
Just one. People interested.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. And we'll go to the council comments. Mr. Bachman, we'll start with you.
Really, the only thing I have to add is second half of the football game should be starting up soon, so go Bolts.
I would, I'd add, Northmont was recognized this past week for receiving five stars on the Ohio Department of Education State Report Card. So I wanted to congratulate the district on that. I know that Superintendent Thomas and the staff work really hard on behalf of the students. So I'm satisfied to see that as a individual who has future Bolts. I saw the JD Custards last day was coming up for anybody that's interested in stopping by and supporting a local business before they close up for the winter. Sunday, October 1st is their last day for the season. I know that a lot of the students, and I know that our police department gave out like, was it gift cards for wearing a helmet? So I know that the kids appreciated that and JD's is always very supportive of the community. And I wanted to end with adding, adding one thing to your comment, ma'am, about the public engagement through surveys. I think it is important. I think it's something we should continue to do. Looking at the Plan Clayton intro after you said that, the quote from that paragraph is, "Public engagement consisted of 36 interviews, 216 survey responses, 55 participants at 12 public workshops. These participants created the Clayton planning vision that will be used to guide development." Well, in my, with my math, that's .004% of the population provided input for Plan Clayton, which was five years ago now, going on six. So I would agree that we should be interested in maybe surveying the residents in some capacity more frequently and look for a higher percentage of .004% of the population to determine how we are going to sit up here and say, this is what the vision of Clayton should be. So I would encourage Amanda to maybe come up with some ideas for us to initiate for 2024. I, I would love to see it and I don't know if we could maybe put it in our newsletter for residents to become more aware of it, because I know that the city did a lot of advertising for the Plan Clayton interviews, but we only had 36 people come. And that's nothing. 55 participants at 12 public workshops, that's nothing. But those are the people that had input for Plan Clayton, which is, you know, you all know about Plan Clayton. So we need to make sure we get new surveys and data from the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Merkel?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Nothing.
I have nothing either. Thank you.
Well, I don't know how to follow that up, but I'm just going to say.
How to follow it up?
You wait for that all night. Hold on. I just want to say thanks to our staff, you know, welcome to our, our new firefighters and, and employees and team members. Glad to see, glad to see those, those spots filled. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and your interest in the city, in your city, in our city. Earl, did you want to say something else?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. We're going to let Earl interject here. Sorry about that.
That's all right. I just wanted, my name is Earl Harlemur, 6420 Lebon Court, Parks Director. I want to let everybody know that the parks, if you haven't been to the parks lately, please go. Westbrook Park has the new bathrooms put in and they are wonderful. I mean, for, for bathrooms. Where that park is also going to take the tennis courts, they're going to re-surface the tennis courts and they're going to put pickleball inside of the tennis court, the tennis thing, so you can play pickleball or tennis on those. You got two of them down there. Plenty of parking. Police Department watches it close. Northview Park has got, right now has about 55 or 60% of all the equipment in the park for handicap. When that all gets done, we're going to have a grand opening. We're going to have everybody down. I want everybody to come and look at our new park down there. The sidewalks are in, the, the, everything else is in. Company that's doing it is, it's just, it's just wonderful to see. You go down to Hearts Gravel, Hearts Gravel's got all the pavement in now. Walking path is up. Everything else there is really starting to look sharp. Plenty of place for people to get fresh air and enjoy themselves. I want everybody to come. October 3rd, we will have a table in the fire department inside their building and we'll have video of different things that's happening in the parks. I still want you to go to the parks. I don't want you to rely on our videos or, or anything, since we're going to do some aerial videos. I still want you to go to the parks and just see how wonderful Clayton is really promoting our parks, trying to get people out, trying to get your health up by walking to the parks, take your dogs through them. We got dog stations, everything. It's just a wonderful time of year and it's getting close to winter, so you really need to do it now. And as the leaves turn, it'll really look pretty. So thank you, guys. Thank you. And Elaine and Jack and everybody else, Randy who has all worked on that, it's, it's really looking good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thanks to your committee for all that they do. So I just want to say again, thanks to everybody for coming. Thanks for the good work, everybody from our council and from our, our staff here in Clayton. So with that, is there a motion to?
I'll move to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. Everybody be care-